Ladies and gentlemen, I think it's the appointed hour of 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the work session to order, and I will bounce pass to the city manager.
And I direct us to Emily Veers, who's with our auditing firm, to deliver the summation of the audit this evening.
Good evening. Do I need to do anything?
Yes, touch that.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present. It's good to be in person again and see everybody. My name is Emily Veers. I'm the partner in charge on your engagement. For those of you that have had the pleasure, or perhaps the pain, of sitting through an audit presentation with me before, we'll do basically what we've done in the past. We'll walk through the large file, which is your financial statements, and then we'll move over to the smaller presentation file. I'm not going to go too much into detail, so we'll just jump right in. You guys are welcome to jump in if you've got questions, or I can go over anything at the end as well. So just to get started, a couple of things to mention on page five is your GFOA certificate of achievement. That's something that you guys apply for each year, and that is something that you received for 2020, and we hope to apply for and receive that again this year. And we're in the bigger one, the big one underneath here. Yeah. So we'll apply for that. I think it's due at the end of December. Jen will apply for that again this year, and we fully expect and hope that you will receive that certificate again for your 2021 report. The next thing to mention is on page eight. This is the independent auditor's report. Here, we take a look and we state whether we think that your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You guys have a clean, unmodified opinion, so that means we think that the numbers as presented are correct and in accordance with all of the applicable standards. So that's what you want in your audit opinion. The opinion does look a little bit different this year. You did implement GASB-84 during the year. That relates to fiduciary funds. It really just changed the name from agency funds to custodial funds, and it also required that your school activity funds be incorporated into the school fund information. So overall, it's not a drastic change, but that is mentioned in your audit opinion. The next thing is on page 11. This is management's discussion and analysis. This is something that Jen put together this year, and it's really a Cliff Notes version of the report. For those of you that will read the whole report, or try to read the report and make it to pension and OPEB and throw in the towel, you might just look at the management's discussion and analysis. That'll kind of hit the highlights for you and tell you what happened during the year and all the key points. The next few pages, starting on page 21, are the financial statements themselves. So page 21 and 22 are the entity-wide financial statements that have a long-term perspective for your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Exhibits three and five, on pages 23 and 25, are on the modified basis of accounting, so those look at about 60 days after year-end. They're much closer to the near term and tell you, you know, over the next couple of months, what are your upcoming liabilities? What cash do you have on hand? What receivables do you have to pay those upcoming liabilities? So it's a much shorter-term focus. Exhibits four and six are meant to reconcile between the modified basis to the full accrual basis. Exhibit seven, eight, and nine relate to your utility fund, so that's a balance sheet, an income statement, and a cash flow for the utility fund. Exhibits 10 and 11 are your fiduciary funds. In the past, you've just had a balance sheet for your fiduciary funds, but this year, we added an income statement that's part of the implementation of GASB-84 as well.
Emily, which exhibit was the utility fund?
The utility funds are exhibit seven, eight, and nine, so pages 27 through 29.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. The notes to the financial statements are on pages 32 to 107, so that's the bulk of the report. That's where you get a little bit more detail about the numbers that are shown, so if you see a number and you're not really sure what makes it up or how that number is derived, you might look at the notes, and that might provide a little bit more information. The next few sections are required supplementary, other supplementary, and statistical. I'm going to jump over all of that and go all the way to the back of the report. On page 168, this is what I usually refer to as your yellow book opinion. We take a look at your internal controls and then APA-required specifications that we have to look at for compliance with the Code of Virginia. We did have one item that we noted in your internal controls. We had some material audit adjustments that were proposed this year. We'll touch on that again in just a minute, but that's not an uncommon finding that we have at other places. The next thing is on page 170. This is an auditor's report in accordance with Uniform Guidance. That is new this year. You haven't had a single audit for the last several years, but you did have federal funds in excess of $750,000 due to the CARES or coronavirus relief funds. So we did have to do a single audit this year. So page 170 and 171 are the report in accordance with Uniform Guidance, where we took a look. The program that we audited was the CARES or the coronavirus relief fund program, so you had a clean, unmodified opinion. So that means we didn't have any internal control or compliance-related matters related to that program, or with the overriding Uniform Guidance requirements.
And would that, if we were audited on that?
That's easier. Microphone, anybody's.
So if you, does that go into enough detail that if we were audited by the government, they would look at the, that we have enough documentation to support what we did, or you don't look at it from that standpoint?
No, so if the state, the state is doing reviews over the CARES and the coronavirus relief funds, and if they do a review, what it sounds like they're doing is basically what we did. They will pick samples, and they will ask for documentation for maybe the same things that we tested, maybe different things than what we tested, and they'll do kind of their own review to make sure that they think that you've used those funds in accordance with the program requirements. So if the state does do a review, they all do their own, almost audit procedures.
But similar, same, but you did.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a good indication that we have good documentation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jennifer can fill us in with what she's been doing. She's been working through it as we speak.
Yes, so we were selected for a partial audit for the CARES funds that we received.
Hey, Jen, if you don't mind, just use the microphone there. I'm not sure how many people are going to tune in to listen to this, but just in case.
It's exciting stuff, Mayor.
Indeed.
So we were selected to be audited for certain transactions that we had under the CARES funds. We sent them all of the documentation, and I've been working with, I think it's called the Department of Accounts at the state, to ensure that everything was reported to them correctly. And just yesterday or the day before, they signed off that they have everything they need, and so I'm just waiting for their final report back to us, but I don't expect any issues.
Super. Thank you.
One thing that I know, when we reconciled our information, we reconciled your ledger to the expenses reported, and the only thing that I've heard from other localities, knock on wood so far, is that we kind of did that in total, to make sure that in grand total, what you said you spent matches what you spent. And they were kind of looking line by line, and so they have requested that some things be moved between lines, but otherwise, I think that we found that our review and our audit kind of went hand-in-hand with theirs, but I can't say that that'll always be the case. The last couple of things that are in your financial statements, there's a schedule of expenditures to federal awards, which just details out all of the federal funds that you received and expended during the year, and then at the end, there's a schedule of findings and question costs. The only thing that's mentioned there is, again, the item that I mentioned related to adjustments, and otherwise, there's nothing really of interest back there. If there aren't any questions on the report, I thought we would move over to the smaller handout file.
One thing that just caught my eye on page 175, it's got 2021-001, material weakness. Can you expound on that?
Yeah. So that's just, we'll see then when we get over to the smaller file, but that's, what that means is that we had to propose material audit adjustments as part of our procedures, and so because they were material in nature, that means that there's some sort of weakness in the controls, that those items were not caught before we came in to perform our procedures. I think that it predominantly related to the turnover at the end of the year. You know, Jen, I think, had a great roadmap to follow from the previous finance directors for all of the routine transactions that happened during the year, and I think she did a great job of encompassing those types of entries. The refunding that you had during the year was not in the books, and so that's material in nature, because it's, I believe it was $7 million.
Right.
And so that, in and of itself, resulted in this adjustment.
And this is more of a caution as opposed to a, like, material weakness just sounds bad.
Yeah, and I think it's really, it's really just in gathering this report together to make sure that it's in accordance with GAAP. It doesn't have to do with, like, the day-to-day operations and the functionality of the city.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
And like I said, that's not an uncommon. I think that we're still wrapping up some of our audits, but I think so far, I have completed six larger locality audits, and I think that all six of them have had this finding this year. There was just a lot going on this year.
Safe to say, with all the COVID issues and government distributions, exactly where you plug them in is a little bit tricky.
Yeah.
And certainly out of the norm.
It is, and I think that, I think that you guys particularly did a great job with your CARES and your CRF, the processes that you put in place, the review that Jake performed during the year. So hopefully, if you keep those up for your ARPA funds, I think that'll be really great. We've done the audit at some places, and it's just been a little bit more difficult. People really are not used to getting millions of dollars thrown in their laps to spend in a time period of seven months. So I think that you guys did a really good job of, you know, making sure that you got those controls and processes in place to spend those funds appropriately.
Emily, can I ask you a question? Page 174 at the bottom, it says, "Audity qualified as low-risk audity," and the answer being no, and I'm just curious, how does one qualify as a low-risk audity?
So you guys will not qualify again next year, because you did not have a single audit in the previous two years.
Okay.
So that's simply by virtue of the fact that you didn't have over $750,000 in federal funds.
Okay.
If we have material weaknesses again on your financial statement, that would prohibit you from being a low-risk audity as well. There's a couple of other factors, but they're far less common. So between those two things, you'll be high-risk again next year because of your single audit status and then the material weakness.
Got it. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. When we talk about low-risk or high-risk audity, this is with regard to the federal
Yes.
side of it, not anything else?
Yes, just regard to the federal side.
All right, just be clear about that.
Yeah, people get a little bit nervous when they see that, but it's really just related to the federal side, and it really, in my opinion, at least for you guys, for your first year of doing this, it really doesn't matter. It's really not that important. For the smaller presentation file, we're going to go to page two. Here, we've really just summarized the income statement for the general fund on the modified basis, so these numbers will match exhibit five in the report. We've got, as normal, the annualized growth rates off to the side to hopefully kind of negate the effects of any outlined transactions or things that might occur during the year, so that you can see over the course of five years, you know, how incrementally your revenues or your expenditures are growing or declining. Obviously, your intergovernmental revenues went up pretty significantly over the course of the year. That will continue to happen as you spend your ARPA money. I imagine that over the next five years, this schedule will become less and less informative and less and less important as you spend your ARPA money. It's going to kind of dilute the other activity of the city.
Emily, with the growth piece, is that 2020 to '21, or is that the five-year growth?
That should be from the five-year growth, and it should be annualized that your, like, for example, your intergovernmental revenue, if you did the math, it should grow 11% each year to get from 17 to 2021.
Okay. The average of the, okay.
Yep, over the course of the years.
Yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Not a whole lot really jumped out to me. Your growth rates look pretty good. They seem to be, you know, growing with inflation rates. You did have bond issuance costs during the year related to that refunding, which I think helps offset up towards the top. Your revenue from use of money and property dropped pretty drastically, because interest rates dropped pretty drastically. You were able to take advantage of that and refund some debt, so that you'll save some money over the course of the life of that debt. So that's great, that you guys were able to do that. I had some clients that already had great interest rates, and they really couldn't take advantage of the drop in rates. Towards the bottom, we take a look at your fund balance as compared to your expenditures and your cash balances as compared to expenditures. I did change it just slightly this year. We're looking at unassigned fund balance only, so it takes out the effects of, if you all have earmarked or committed funds for a specific purpose, I kind of took those out, so that you see what you have on hand that's not earmarked already. Generally speaking, we would expect or see that your fund balance and your cash and investment balances would kind of trend together, and they would be pretty comparable. Usually, your cash balance is slightly higher than your fund balance. You see in 2021 that there's a pretty big gap of $6 million between your fund balance and your cash and investments. That's just because you have 4.6 million in ARPA money that's sitting in cash that doesn't go to the bottom line, because it's deferred on your financial statements. So it kind of, it kind of looks a little bit weird in 2021 compared to normal years. But at the very bottom, you can see that you guys have very healthy reserve balances as normal, so nothing, nothing to worry about or be concerned about there. GFOA typically recommends two months of reserve balances in place, which works out to about 17%. You'll probably remember that I tend to be a risk-averse person, so I recommend that you have higher balances than that, just so that you've got funds set aside for a rainy day, but just to kind of compare to what your balances are. GFOA recommends about 17%. The next couple of pages, I just usually think are a little bit interesting. I shouldn't be surprised anymore, but it's always, it's just interesting to me that your revenues and your expenses are generated from roughly the same pots of money and expended on the same functions every year. The CARES money really didn't change that as much as I thought it might. The lighter green shade that jumped from 14% to 19% is your intergovernmental, and then your local revenues, your property taxes and your other local taxes held pretty strong. Other local taxes dropped a little bit, meals tax and lodging tax were down a little bit, but they still held pretty strong in comparison. On the expenditure side of things, you expended your money roughly the same as always. It seems like public safety did go up. You did use about half of your CARES or CRF money for public safety salaries. You had some business grants, distance learning. You put in the installations at the sites for the touchless doors and sinks and all that stuff. So it really didn't, it didn't change where you expended your money as much as I thought it might.
What have you seen with other localities? Is there more of a change than what we had?
You're my first one.
Oh, okay.
I haven't compared others yet to see, to see how they are, but I expect that some places, everybody kind of did something different with their money. You know, I have some places who gave out all their money in business grants or not-for-profit grants, and some places who, who did, you know, kind of like you did, took about part of it to pay for public safety salaries and things like that, and then kind of portioned up the rest of it. So I don't know. I'm kind of curious to see how the other ones will end up looking. The next page, on page five, is the income statement for the utility fund. This is basically the same thing that we did for the general fund. You can see that from 2020 to 2021, you had a pretty significant increase in your operating revenues and your operating expenses, increases in fees for Maury services, and then increases in your water and sewer rates during the year to help compensate for that. As always, I'm excited to see that your revenues are growing just slightly more than your expenses are growing, so that you can make sure that you're covering those expenses. You can have a little bit fall to the bottom line. That way, you've got reserves in place as your water and sewer lines age out and need to be replaced. On page six is just a debt summary. Some people really like to see about halfway, halfway down the page, the blue line. Some people really like to see the debt per capita numbers and how they compare to the state. I generally don't, don't pay a whole lot of attention to it, because it just depends on what you guys have in store for capital projects and how much you funded on your own versus debt, and everybody's so different, that I think it's a little, a little tricky to kind of compare yourself to other localities too much. But that's really the main intent of this. I know that a lot of people like to see it, so I try to include it. Not a whole lot of movement here. You can see that at the top, the bonds, your overall bonds did go down. You had an issuance during the year for the refunding and then just routine debt payments from there. The next page takes a look at the assessed values of properties for taxes.
Emily, can I back up just a second?
Sure.
Page six. The line, net pension liability.
Uh-huh.
Is that reflecting VRS, or?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's your VRS. The pension piece of it, you also have OPEB plans where people will, I can't remember which ones. I think you participate in group life through VRS as well.
Right.
But the pension is the normal retirement plan.
Okay. Why does that fluctuate so much? Is that, is this our contribution for that year?
No, so this has been net pension liability, and it's trying, what it's trying to do is figure out, how many people do you have working now that are going to stay long enough to retire? And then what's that going to cost you? What percentage are going to stay? Are they going to stay until they're fully vested? And then it tries to bring all that back to present value, and so it fluctuates so much because of changes in the discount rate, and then sometimes they earn way more than they think they will on investments, or way less than they think they will.
Right.
So I try, I used to have a schedule in here. I actually took it out this year, because I thought everybody was getting tired of me talking about pension and OPEB all the time. But that's why it fluctuates so much. It's just all the different estimates that go into it.
Just the calculation. So as we have turnover, somebody retires, it inherently should go down a little bit, because the liability is gone.
Yeah, but then if you replace someone else, now they're going to be there for 30 more years, and so it
Right.
It's all dependent on that. And these numbers actually come straight from the Virginia retirement system. They're out there online, and we just incorporate them into your, into your numbers.
Interesting numbers, but they really don't mean a whole lot. It just gives us some idea of what VRS has to be able to provide for our community.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The next page is the assessed values for property. Not a whole lot to talk about, really. You know, your, your property values are staying pretty consistent, not a lot of growth, but there's not a lot of decline, which is what we are seeing in some places, particularly with real estate. So at least your values are holding their own. They're not growing, but it's better than declining as well. Page eight, this is a required communication with governance letter, so it's just something that we're required to provide with you after our audit procedures. It goes over the fact that you implemented GASB-84 this year, which we've already talked about. It goes over your significant estimates, which are the same as they've been in the past, depreciable lives of fixed assets, allowance for doubtful accounts, and all the pension and OPEB estimates that go into figuring out the liabilities, the deferred outflows and the deferred inflows. It goes over the fact that we have material adjustments related to our procedures, and those adjustments are included in the next section. I don't expect you all to really look at them, but I'm required to give those to you. So you have them if you do want to look at them. If we had any difficulties dealing with management, that would be included here, but you guys, I think, have a really great staff. I know that you've had some turnover, but I think that Jen did a really great job. I always get a little bit anxious working with a new finance director, figuring out how a new finance director does things and where their knowledge base is, but I think she did a really great job coming in after the year and helping us finish things and getting ready for us with, with pretty limited time. And I think, I've said this before, and I think I say it every year, and it's not something that I say everywhere, but I think you've got a good group of people who really work together between departments and between entities to get the audit done, but to make sure that things are running smoothly for the city like they should. So I think that's really great. I think, I think that helps us, and I think it really helps you all, and I think that's reflected in your audit. On page 16 are management recommendations, our recommendations that we had for management as part of the audit. I won't go into, into detail with these, but page 16 has our recommendations, and then page 17 has the response from Jen on, on the plan to address those recommendations. Nothing significant, or they would have been included in the report itself.
No, the reconciliations were off, and we did find the $20,000 difference then?
I have not found it yet.
Okay.
But I've not.
Yeah.
So the cash balance have, have always had a slight difference, but that difference has grown just a little bit every year, and so it's just, Jen's working on finding those. But just to Jen's credit, it didn't go from a zero difference to 20,000 all of, all of this year. You've got, your FSA accounts always create a little bit of a difference, where people contribute to the FSA, and then the changes aren't necessarily reflected on your books, because it's not really your money. It would be due to your employees.
Is this something that was in previous audits and we just don't remember, perhaps?
No, this was new this year. I wanted to, it was, the balances were not quite as different, but also because of the fact that bank reconciliations weren't really done for the last three months of the year, I wanted to make sure that you all were aware that that happened and that Jen was working to fix that and make sure that those were in place and completed. Page 18, all the way to the end, GASB has been very busy with new standards for all of us to implement, so these are just going over some of the upcoming standards that'll need to be implemented. The lease standard will need to be implemented for next year, so I imagine we're in full swing of our busy season right now, but once things settle down, we'll probably put together a client bulletin just to help provide some practical guidance on how to address the implementation of the capital lease standard. So if you guys have trouble sleeping tonight, you might want to read these last few pages. But otherwise, you know, just to wrap things up, we had three audit opinions. Your audit opinion was clean, unmodified. The yellow book had one item to note, and then the Uniform Guidance was a clean, unmodified opinion. You can expect to have probably a Uniform Guidance, depending on how quickly you spend your ARPA money. Over the next few years, we'll have to do those single audit procedures again for at least a few years, probably. But otherwise, I think that the audit itself went well. It's never a pain-free process, but we try to make it more of a partnership, so hopefully that's felt by your staff, too. But I think you guys had a, had a great year, all things considered, so I think you ended it really well.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions for Emily? Mr. Algued?
I want to go back to page seven. And one of the points of discussion in this area has involved the topic of tax-exempt property, and I noticed there was a column here that says "tax-exempt" and whatnot. So when the commissioner of revenue gets the assessor's statement and what the value of the assessments are and whatnot, then for some properties not the tax-exempt, bills are sent out, and then money ultimately is received. And so when we total up the value, the total value of the valuation of the property in Lexington, do these numbers include, say, the WNL property, just saying? And the church properties?
I believe that they would include the WNL and the church properties in those tax-exempt properties.
Because I know she gets, she has numbers for all, Karen Roundy has numbers for all that, the stuff there and whatnot. I was just wondering.
I'm not sure if the WNLs actually come from Karen, so, and we don't do much with the tax-exempt, because you don't bill and collect those. I care more about the money that you bill and collect, so I don't look at your tax-exempt a whole lot, to be completely honest.
So this table is more representative of what's billed and collected?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In there, do it.
Yeah.
Even though it's got a column up here that says "tax-exempt"?
Right, right.
So this tax-exempt column would apply how?
It just shows you what those values are for your tax-exempt properties, because they are part of your, your overall property value within, within your district, but it isn't something that you can tax and generate a revenue on. So it's not, it's not really included in the table beneath that shows your taxable properties.
Yeah, another point of conversation typically has been the high percentage at Lexington, and I don't use this word lightly, enjoys or doesn't enjoy. What's our percent now of tax-exempt? It's up in the 60s, whatnot, and whatnot, so, you know, that means 38% pays the bills of the assessments and whatnot. All right.
If I'm hearing you correctly, if there are additional questions about the numbers in this, on this particular page, seeking out Karen to understand the details behind those numbers is the right place.
Yes, I think so. I might have, I might have some schedules that I could provide you, but she probably has much more of a knowledge base of those numbers.
Yeah, I've had several conversations with Karen about that. That's why. I was just curious about how these numbers originally. Thank you.
Any other members of council have questions, issues, concerns about the audits? Emily, one, and this may be for staff more so, but Um, Emily, one, uh, and this may be for staff more so, but, um, my, my sense is, um, well, the bank reconciliation, uh, had not been completed since March of 2021. Uh, is there, um, is that because of transition? Is that the primary?
Yeah, I think that's just due to transition. Um, and then it just, to my understanding is that it just kind of got overlooked that the person that did the bank reconciliations transitioned. And then that didn't really get picked up, um, by anybody else in the interim time period.
So theoretically that was Tommy's job. He left and, well, waiting to hire somebody and get people in place. Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure, cause you can always reconcile them later.
Yeah.
That, that it's not something that has to be done, but it's a good practice to do.
Yes, we recommend, um, if there's, if there's one thing that I want people to do, it's reconcile their bank accounts. Um, so we typically recommend that they do it within two weeks after a month in, um, because if your cash isn't right, then nothing is right and you can't really rely on a lot of the numbers. Um, so it was a little bit alarming that it hadn't been done for three months, but I think that, I feel pretty confident that it has been picked up and will be for going forward. You can go back and reconcile them. Um, it just makes me a bit nervous about the numbers that are going to be presented to council, um, you know, or anybody else if they haven't been reconciled yet.
Certainly. Need, need to keep an focal point, but if you don't have staff there to complete it, um, it can be, it's important to keep staff and, um, compensate them well so that we can, uh, get the jo- get the work done.
Yes.
Thank you, Emily.
Mm hmm.
There's, uh, Pat. If you don't mind, come use the microphone in case anybody's listening in. Sorry.
Uh, I would, I just wanted to say that, um, in our process with the city and Emily, I think knows this too, so kind of a two-part part that we do. So one part is cash reconciliation that the attorney's office does. And so every month that is balanced to the bank statement. Then there's this other piece that finance completes and that, and both parts are to the general ledger. So we in fact track cash every day, you know, so, but there's this one little piece that this person that in that position uses computer system to reconcile. I think I'm saying that correctly, Jennifer. Because that's in the, on the finance side. So if I'm saying that incorrectly, please correct me. I just wanted to say that, yeah, we are.
Thank you. Uh, if, uh, that's all, um, thank you for, uh, making the journey and glad you don't have a snowstorm greeting you on the way back to Blacksburg. You can put the top down and, uh, enjoy the beautiful evening.
Well, thank you all. You guys have a good night. Have a good holiday.
Thank you. We're going to continue on the work session and invite Jen to the table. And go over these, uh, uh, Denny menus that have been prepared.
Well, we hoped it would be a, a little easier to read as we move to a larger piece of paper because there's a lot of numbers on this paper, of course. Jen and I did go over this with Leslie and with David, uh, earlier this week and we spent a little more time than we have here tonight. So we'll try and get through this pretty quickly. Basically what we're trying to do here is to represent the comprehensive financial background, overall health of the city, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, to educate you so you make better decisions and understand what we are facing, what our opportunities are. And two, because frankly, we are, are in very good condition. We like to let the public know that. And because of that, we then do have opportunities, US City Council, to take on some, make some decisions, take on some projects or take advantage of some opportunities that we would not normally have. And of course I would like to get feedback from you then also tonight to a certain extent and later on as we progress, make some recommendations about some of the opportunities I believe we should pursue. So as you can see, if you look at the top of it, we're talking about a number of fiscal years from left to right, FY twenty-one being the end, the year just ended. And we work down through the general fund and through some of our other major, uh, cash areas, uh, in the city. Looking at the general fund, as the auditor just mentioned, we have the first line is the unassigned fund balance that's required. Those are our operating reserves that we have to maintain each year. And you can see we've, we've been healthy. We still are healthy, as, uh, Emily said, and, uh, predict that with good planning, we will always remain healthy in that regard. The big number is the second line there. That's the excess unassigned fund ba- fund balance. Those are dollars that you could spend on anything at any time, period. We are very healthy, as Emily said. If, uh, four million, thirty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars is seventeen percent, obviously we're well over fifty percent of what is required. When you look at what we have available, or very close to fifty percent, I should say well over, we're double that. So, and no, we are, we triple that. Eight million, four hundred thousand dollars is over double what we're required to have. So we're over fifty percent. And we believe that'll increase over time based on what we're seeing. The surplus adjustment is just taking out of fund balance what was recorded in the audit, FY twenty-one, was the carryover that we've already assigned. And some of that was assigned to the equipment replacement fund, as we recall, and some to capital investment or capital improvement. And the others are in the current operating budget. The VDOT purchase, that is what we'll pay for the VDOT property. And we dropped it in there to represent that, you know, although the payment has not been made yet, and I just found this out in the last week, that is what we will pay. So the appraisal has been finished. We've agreed. Because the formula that was adopted by the general assembly, they have an appraisal, we have an appraisal. You take the average of the two, that's the price. So it's a, it did not increase instrumentally or, you know, as much as I thought it would. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. And then we added the two million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in ARPA funds that are the revenue replacement funds only, because they can be spent for anything again. So park them in the general fund balance and we can decide, city council can decide later how you use those funds.
Is there a time with which we, those need to be spent?
No.
No.
Because they're revenue replacement.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
They have been spent as revenue replacement. So yes, they have been spent already within the timeline.
They replace revenues, so they're, they're really not an expenditure. They're allocated to the general fund. This is the ARPA funds.
Right.
These are pennies from heaven that are replacing what we've already spent.
That's what we're saying. It's a, on, on paper, they have been spent.
Yes, you could, you could make that assumption, yes.
Yeah.
True.
This, this is just a quick statement there. We had a discussion some weeks, maybe a month or so ago, when we were trying to figure out after we attended, I think Mr. Ziegler was in on that meeting, uh, the Zoom meeting where we figured, or, or we were told how to figure, uh, the replacement funds, uh, based on the growth that did or did not happen in there. And so because ours did not happen, this was the part that we benefited. Uh, and that, that, uh, ends up being unencumbered. We could use it for anything.
They're unrestricted. Yes, sir.
Right.
Mm hmm. You're correct. So again, you can see the growth over time and the bottom line is what, how we, how we envision the general fund balance to change. The line above that is the annual contribution that we have typically made from our operating budget at the end of the fiscal year. And what we've done is taken the five years, the last five years of, of average of that five years. We've cut that in half and just assumed in the next several years, we'd only make half the contribution we typically have. Very safe, I believe. We don't know what that will be, but nonetheless, it's probably pretty, um, pretty safe. So any questions on the general fund and the general, I should say, general fund balance itself and what has compromised that, that balance today?
I have one question just to make sure I'm understanding. When we look backwards at the last five years, we had some anomalies with million dollar surpluses.
Mm hmm.
If we're organizing a balanced budget for the forward year, you're anticipating a $500,000 surplus and budgeting half of that to add to the general fund, which makes me a little, uh, it makes me scratch my head.
I thought the same thing. So what I did, when I looked at the average, I actually used FY sixteen through FY twenty. I just didn't include FY twenty-one since we had all of that CARES money and everything.
But, but those were all anomalies, sixteen through twenty. If there was one thing that, I mean, not that you would know this, but, but if there was one thing that NOAA did prioritize is we built up the, the fund balance significantly and where you just said anomalies of one million dol- actually it was almost each year. I mean, I mean.
Yeah, there were at least two years that we had a million dollar surplus, but we started the year.
With a balanced budget.
Budget. So, um, I can't remember exactly how we got there. In some instances, we were conservative in our budgeting. But I, I guess I, I'm concerned that going forward, we're probably not going to be staring down. I, I wouldn't anticipate that we would end up with a $500,000 surplus.
Well, I don't disagree. That's why we said five hundred thousand is what we take as the average and half of that is what we calculate we could probably set aside.
Okay.
You know, we're going to have some years, yes, when we probably only have a $250,000 carryover. And half of that would be a hundred twenty-five, but those are the lean years, hopefully.
Right.
I mean, we don't know what we can anticipate.
But just the fact that we anticipate.
I think with that, that's, I think that that was a he- helpful line item to let us know that we've been fortunate to have surpluses that have been adding to the general fund balance. But we could have had this document without that. But I think it's important to know that, that we've been growing at an incredible clip. And when one penny on the tax rate is $53,500 or something to that effect, it's helpful to see it on this, on this document.
Right.
The next grouping of numbers is our CIP. And of course, we all know that we spend CIP dollars on our major projects and major pieces of equipment and police and fire, et cetera. Excuse me, we don't. That's an equipment replacement fund, major projects. Roads, bridges, uh, facilities of that nature. And again, on the top, we have our starting year balance of, uh, CIP funds available. This is a, a balance that goes year to year and, you know, starting out in fiscal year twenty-two, we'll have three million or do have three million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. Based on what we plan to spend and what our annual contribution is, you can see what we'll be the end of the year at, four million, three hundred four thousand dollars. And this carries across from S- FY twenty-two to twenty-three, all the way to twenty-seven. The anomaly there is if you get to FY twenty-five, and we have healthy balances at the year end on all those years. FY twenty-five is an anomaly. You'll see that we're planning to spend over four million dollars and make a contribution of five million dollars. Realistically, we cannot make that type of contribution in a fiscal year without sacrificing many other things that we could not sacrifice. But just so we all see it, it's being placed there. That year is the year we plan on in our CIP to replace or renovate City Hall. So that's what the expenditure is. That's what the, the amounts are. Now, what we have done in the past is, uh, some years allocate more into the CIP than we plan on spending. And so we can cover some of those larger expenditures when we can't make the complete contribution in a specific fiscal year. Obviously, we still won't have those monies available. In all likelihood, what we'll do at that time is we'll finance it. But we're showing it there for you to understand and see that it is there. We recognize it. And if interest rates are what they are today or anywhere close to it, we'll finance that and that will go away.
I remain, uh, very eager to see City Hall renovated, but I'm optimistic that we can do it for far less than four million dollars. I hope that any contractors don't, um, see that number before they, um, complete their bid.
Well, obviously we don't kind of work it requires, but we'll have to.
Right.
Step by step, go through that. So any questions on the CIP? Again, we're very, very healthy there, looking at what our needs are. Uh, there may be other projects we'd like to address, either city council, the community or staff want to put in the CIP. But over this number of fiscal years, we're still in very good shape. Okay. Equipment replacement fund, same concept here as with the CIP. You start out looking, well, that's not quite the same. We start out with, uh, expenditures both in the fire department, police department and public works. Then we have our contributions that are put in annually into the operating budget and taken out and put into the equipment replacement fund. We note the contribution the county makes that goes to fire equipment only. Uh, don't break it down here any, any other way than that, but it's here. And then you can see the year-end balance and what our cumulative reserves are over time. That's the bottom line. And it, you know, from year to year, you can see that we have 1.8 million currently. Uh, and in some years we're down to five, or $378,000 because, uh, as the equipment purchases go up and our contribution stays relatively flat for budget purposes. Uh, we have some lean years, the, the balance goes down, some better years, and the balance goes back up. So, any, any questions?
Is there a, um, a planned, or the word's not coming to me, but, um, an estimate that we target almost like as a contingency in, in the, um, equipment replacement? Or is it pretty much, we're going to buy a truck in four years and we stock money away for the four years to purchase it? Cause obviously we have the, oh crap, that the engine blew up in a repair. Um, is that reflected in here? And so we keep maybe, you know, ten percent of our fleet or something of that nature?
I've never been informed of that, but maybe Jennifer has seen something of that nature.
No, I was going to say the same. From what I've seen so far, it's simply been, um, just like a three percent increase per year that's been put into the equipment replacement fund.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, a quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the second line, it says LPD.
Yeah.
Uh, notice that the, the numbers tend to flip flop, flip flop and just on levels of sixteen, one oh four, thirty-six, one oh two, uh, thirty-nine, twenty-two.
Well, we have almost eighteen, I believe eighteen or nineteen vehicles in the fleet. And based on when they leave the fleet, some years we're replacing three or four cars and some years only one or two.
I see. So that's what's happening. It's just.
Yeah.
They're timing out.
Based on the replacement schedule.
All right, just timing out, okay. Thanks.
So going down to debt service, this is pretty, pretty simple. I think the, it, it, the important things to know here, and I'll let Jen explain in some more detail, is that some of these bonds and several of you have noted over time that some of these are, are going to be finished. We'll stop paying for them. You don't see it on this chart, but Jen, just as we get to the end of this period, what are we looking at as far as, uh, debt service is falling off?
So at the end of FY twenty-seven, the two school issues will be completely paid off. So we'll have $584,000 freed up. And then the following year in FY twenty-eight, the jail bond is paid off. So that'll be another hundred and twenty-eight thousand falling off. So in FY twenty-nine, we're looking at $713,000 that we used to spend on debt that we now have available.
So what we don't know, when the high school may be renovated or the jail may be renovated. We do have some debt service that it's a few years down the road, but we can, uh, anticipate falling off for some of the needs that we might have. It's just to let us see that and understand it.
Or MSA. There, there's, I can tell you, there's a chunk of money.
And MSA.
And MSA.
If you were not, if you were to go outside of the utility fund, correct, if you were to, to.
Well, uh, some of that debt that's already existing on MSA is outside the utility fund.
Well, you're paying back the general fund.
I'm not sure. The, the, we had, uh, it's my understanding that it's structured two ways. We have the, the revenue from the bills, the water and sewer bills, that's coming in. And we figure that and that's, that's one thing. But then MSA on the last go around had, uh, debt service that we, uh, handled, that the county handled its part and the city handled its part that was not included in the utility billing to the customers.
I, I wouldn't swear to it, but I believe all of our utility fund debt is covered in the utility fund now, the expenses.
Is that $120,000 a year that we carried over? And we show it at budget time, wasn't that, um, the utility fund borrowed from the general fund and paying that back?
Yes, yes. There's that, but I don't know. I thought we were talking about.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what I'm talking about.
Is it one, one point two million to do the meter project?
Right.
And so the, the general fund made a loan to the utility fund, zero interest for that piece. But the MSA has their own debt.
Yeah, right.
Which we just get the bill, it's part of our billing.
Right.
Uh, I was under the impression that MSA didn't have the debt that the localities, uh, handled the debt.
Well.
They're, they're parts, they're, they're percentages.
That, we're the only partners in the MSA.
And Rutgers County.
The MSA has the debt.
That's right.
Correct.
Somebody's got to pay the bill.
Correct.
Right.
I guess it could be structured either way. When new debt comes on, he, as localities, we could take on our share and the PSA could take on their share. Or the MSA could have the whole debt service payment they meet and then they just charge us as, uh, customers.
Our percentage.
Yeah.
Right. Well, in, just in general, just back of the envelope, count the numbers. Our share is projected. Don't know when it's going to fall, where probably at the earliest next fiscal year to be at least 10 million or in the neighborhood of $10 million for only the water plant, the drinking water. for only the water plant, the drinking water plant. And then to come is going to be the consideration for the modernization for the water, wastewater treatment plant, which is going to be on top of that. And I have no idea what those numbers estimated are to be yet. I haven't heard any report like that, so I know that.
That's the other side of the coin, the liabilities that we have into the future, which there's nothing, nothing programmed in MSA because we don't know what they are.
Right, that's blank here.
Same with the jail. There, there's something coming, we just don't know what. But I would suggest we have every confidence in staff and the board members of the MSA coming up with the best possible solution. It ain't going to be cheap.
Well, as I've said from time to time, hang on to your wallet.
Right. Indeed.
Other questions about debt servicing? Good points, Ms. Tralagut, I appreciate that. And as the mayor mentioned, we have other than projects underneath that we are aware of. And just to let us see those as we go down the road, the VDOT project at the top, those are VDOT funds. So we don't really see that moving in and out of our budget. We wanted to mention it so you all know where it is. We talked about the ARPA funding and utility projects, which we're not dealing with tonight. We would anticipate would absorb the bulk of that, nine million dollars. The other two point four roughly goes into the general fund balance. Then we look at what we did with FY '21 surplus that we all are aware of, what was already done with it. And again, I sort of skipped over the needs up on top for new funding, the high school, the ladder truck, MSA, et cetera. But what we do know is there and what we don't know is just indicated that we'll face that question or some, some point in time, that expense. So any questions overall?
You know, back up where we were talking about the CIP and you kind of finished that explanation by saying we're in good shape. You know, members of the community suggestions, this council suggestions. But just to clarify, we're in good shape if you take out the fact that we're going to be rebuilding a new jail. And we're in good shape if you take out the fact that the high school needs renovated for fifty million dollars and our share is fifteen point three percent. So, I mean, aside from that, we're in good shape. But to be truth and, you know, truth in advertising, we know we've got liabilities of fifteen to twenty million dollars. So we're not in as good a shape.
Right.
That, you know, knowing what we know.
Yeah, we, we do have big projects ahead. Yes, yes, sir, we're right, you're correct about that. Some of this, I would recommend we do two things with it when we get to a certain point further down the road is reserve a significant amount of that for debt service. And the other purpose I would suggest, as we get a little further down the road in this conversation, is take some of this eight million dollars and put it into the CIP and into the equipment replacement fund because that's where we're going to need funds for other projects in the near future over these years that we're projecting here. And the, the important aspect of doing that is if you do that today or very soon, if we get to a year where our budget is a little leaner, we don't then have to make the same size contribution to this, the equipment replacement fund or the CIP because we funded it in advance by putting a five hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand more into one of those two funds.
But whether the money is sitting in the equipment replacement fund or the capital improvement fund or it's sitting in excess unassigned, unassigned fund balance, it's just an advertisement, an emotion, and a, and we move it, right? I mean, so it's there for when we need it, whether we make a budget amendment now and we slide a bunch from one account to the other. I mean, we've been prudent on, on the, you know, on the surface. We have a very healthy excess, you know, unassigned fund balance. We're proud of that. We're not just saving it for the heck of saving it. We're saving it because we know what's coming. And this council has always taken a long view, I mean, of, of five years, ten years, fifteen years down the road. I mean, I'm saying this and everyone's nodding their head and I just think it's important that we reaffirm our commitment to that. There's a reason for that. And it also allows us to, this excellent flexibility, of course, that Gary Swink always talked about of the reason to have a healthy unassigned fund balance. It gives us incredible flexibility for a number of reasons, so.
Including cash flow.
Yes.
Yeah. Echo everything you said, David, and I'm grateful for the, there's a concept of you can evaluate a, an organization by where they put their money. If we just have it, if we have lots of debt and no cash or don't assign it looking forward, that reflects poorly on us, I think, so.
Any other questions this evening? Comments, maybe David or Leslie, since you sat through this with us and we took a little more time? I don't know if there's any you'd like to share with the rest of council?
I just have one question for Jen, it's more curiosity. As the organizer and originator of this, the, the blue shade, is it on certain things for certain reasons? What's the?
I had just tried to, I was doing, highlighting every other line to try to make it easier for us to read. But then when I got down to the debt service, I wanted to have the principal and interest lines together in the same color.
Thank you. I knew there was something in that mosaic and I just couldn't find it.
Logic behind the madness.
Yes.
I have six fifty-six. And with meetings to start at seven, we can organize the tables and take a potty break if necessary. And we will stand adjourned. Thank you, staff, for a thorough and thoughtful presentation. And just as a highlight, we'll be taking up the audit, considering the audit in our regular meeting. Thank you.